Board members, please return to the dais. This November 8th, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Key Middle School Symphonic Band under the direction of Alex Klutz.
Madam Chair, if I might, thank you, Mr. Klutz, and your entire symphonic band. Thank you, students, for being here. Thank you, parents, who allow us to share your children tonight. And a shout-out to Principal Hollis, Ms. Amy Hollis, who is right here supporting her students. So, thank you all for being here with us tonight.
The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting "Board Docs" under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. And select "School Board" from the full menu. Then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I call on Mr. Tignor for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Veterans' Day is November 11th, 2018. Veterans' Day, formerly Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the armistice which was signed in the forests of campaign by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, ending World War I after four years of conflict. At 5:00 AM on Monday, November 11th, 1918, the Germans signed the armistice, and order was issued for all firing to cease so the hostilities of the First World War ended. This day began with a laying down of arms, blowing of whistles, impromptu parades, and closing of places of business. All over the globe, there were many demonstrations. No doubt, the world had never before witnessed such rejoicing. Veterans' Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all those living and dead who served with the U.S. Armed Forces. The School Board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honor veterans and recognize the role of the military in American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans, members of the school community, on active-duty military. American Education Week is November 12th to 16th, 2018. American Education Week was established in 1921 by the National Education Association to raise public awareness of the importance of public education in America. This year's theme, "Reach, Educate, Inspire," reminds all Americans of the importance of public education and offers the opportunity to celebrate public education and honor those who ensure that every child receives a quality education. As part of the observance, community leaders are invited to serve as educators for a day in order to get a glimpse at a day in the life of a school employee. American Education Week features a special observance on each day of the week, including parents, education support professionals, and substitute educators. Geography Awareness Week is November 11th to 17th, 2018. Established by Presidential Proclamation more than 25 years ago, this annual public awareness program encourages citizens, young and old, to think and learn about the significance of place and how we are affected by it. Too many young Americans aren't able to make effective decisions, understand geospatial issues, or even recognize their impacts as global citizens. Geography Awareness Week is observed in November. It promotes what geography is, why it is important, and the relevance of geographic education in preparing citizens to understand and debate pressing social and environmental issues and problems. Thank you.
I call on Ms. McLaughlin for the recognition.
School psychologists are uniquely qualified members of school teams, serving students, staff, and families. They receive specialized advanced graduate program preparations that include coursework and practical experiences relevant to both psychology and education. They apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to change lives by taking action to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, emotionally. In alignment with our strategic plan, IGNITE, school psychologists helps individuals realize their own abilities, develop the skills they need to cope with the normal stressors of life, to work productively and fruitfully, and be valuable contributors to our community. School psychologists collaborate with school teams in the development of universal prevention practices that foster resiliency, increase educator understanding of social-emotional development, reduce barriers to learning, and increase student protective factors. They support effective behavior management, leading to improved school climate, response to crises, and teach and implement trauma-informed practices. Our school psychologists utilize expertise in data collection and analysis to identify concerns and to monitor interventions, which may include the formal evaluation process. In their work with students, our school psychologists help them develop social-emotional life skills that are necessary to realize personal achievement and growth, and to build resilience and a sense of belonging. Through delivery of direct services using evidence-based practices, school psychologists provide individual and group counseling to address challenges and concerns. And our school psychologists consult with staff and parents to further their understanding of complex student need and to help them develop the necessary skills to appropriately respond to a student's need. Our school psychologists support our families by sharing information about student skill development and wellness. They develop interventions that may be used at home, and they connect our families with available community resources. All children and youth face problems from time to time related to learning, social relationships, making difficult decisions, and managing emotions such as feeling depressed, anxious, worried, or isolated. Our school psychologists help students, families, educators, and members of the community understand and resolve both long-term, chronic problems, and short-term issues that a student may face. They are highly skilled and a ready resource in an effort to ensure that all Fairfax County children and youth thrive in school, at home, and in life. And so, at this time, I would like to invite our school psychologists who are in the audience to please join me and my colleagues for a photo at this time. And thank you for your service. And while everybody's assembling, I also want to thank them for the lovely reception, as well as the incredible delicious cookies that we're all eyeing here at the dais.
Lonnie, can you fit us all in?
Good, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, everyone, look right here, please. You guys are fine, you guys are comfortable. Very nice, you guys look great. Look right here, please, count three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Thank you guys very much.
Members of the board, please return to the dais. One, two, three, four, five, six. So, ladies and gentlemen, we do have to clean up one administrative item. We did not certify a closed meeting properly. So, in order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 8th, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All those in favor? And that is Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnack-Kofax, Ms. Palchek. All those opposed? And those abstaining, Mr. Wilson. And that motion carries. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, seven citizens have signed up to address the board, and we also have one video testimony. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement programs, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who've come to speak to us tonight. The first speaker is Angela Vasquez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Angela Vasquez, and I am an FCPS graduate and resident of Oak Hill, and the mother of two FCPS elementary school students. I am here for them and to speak to you on the proposed revisions to Policy 8335, Wireless Telecommunication Facilities. First, I would like to thank all of you, especially all the members of the Governance Committee, for all of your work to date and for moving the process forward. I am grateful to the board for the time and good intentions behind the proposed revisions. Unfortunately, these revisions will not resolve several problems this policy has had since the adoption of its predecessor, Policy 8340, in 1997. I can only briefly highlight five of them. Problem number one: Policy 8335 is out of scope with the FCPS mission. FCPS must reconcile the general public's need for wireless connectivity with the FCPS mission so that public perception will not focus on, quote, "obtaining revenue for the benefit of FCPS," end quote. To do this, FCPS must adopt a policy where FCPS is the last resort for placement of all types of wireless telecommunication facilities. FCPS must require vendors to provide written proof of alternative locations that were explored as part of their FCPS application, pre-2232. Problem number two: Section 3B does not mandate notification and the opportunity to provide input to the entire school parent population and abutting neighbors prior to the FCPS staff decision to notify the vendor to proceed with submitting a 2232. Although the current draft Section 3B is full of good intentions and has come a long way from its original in Policy 8335.1, parents and neighbors will continue to be the last to know. Consequently, public outcry will continue. Problem number three: There never was really a crosswalk assessment done to ensure consistency between FCPS and FCPA, which are both public properties regarding policies, regulations, and pricing per wireless telecommunication facility. Problem number four: The policy does not specifically define wireless telecommunication facilities. Problem number five: The policy does not address the requirements of the county's new administrative review eligible project, AIRUP, telecommunications application for small cells in public right-of-way. Thank you.
Lisa Namro.
Hi, my name is Lisa Namro. I'm a Reston resident. Thank you, board members and superintendent, for your time today. I have an FCPS elementary school student. I'm here to discuss the updates to 8335 policy. Since board members in the working session talked about revenue, I'm going to talk about revenue today. What does $190 buy? A few winter coats, gas up for your car, maybe six times, doesn't buy a computer, even a cellphone. $190 is the monthly revenue an FCPS school receives for a cell tower on its property. That is monthly revenue of $0.32 per student if a school has 600 students. Let's add in the additional $1,300 of revenue that goes directly to FCPS. So, that brings the revenue generated by a cell tower to $2.42 per month, per student. Do you think the telecommunication companies who want these towers on FCPS schools are making $1,500 a month? No. Is the monthly revenue of $2.42 per student worth the safety risks that cell towers bring to the students? That's really your decision today and coming up. Is Fairfax County School Board willing to put FCPS students at risk for $2.42? Over the past three years, the community has shared information about the risks with everyone sitting at this board table. Tower fires, towers falling, ice and equipment falling off of towers, risks that could cause fatal injuries. Is it going to take a terrible accident to get all of your attention? The Governance Committee has used best efforts to update the policy, but it's clear through the process the Facilities Department has been a major contributor, and these updates by the communities that were requested were mostly dismissed and ignored. The policy updates you will review fall short. The policy updates do not support FCPS's mission to educate, does not remove elementary schools from consideration, does not require a wireless expert to evaluate CPS applications to validate need. It does not include tactical regulations. Instead, it allows for those regulations to be in a separate document written by the Facilities Department with no oversight. It does not prevent FCPS from granting an easement to a nearby park to allow for a tower to be put next to an FCPS elementary school playground. What does the updated policy do? Some good news, it reinserts the School Board into the approval process. But what else does it do? It prioritizes a third-party vendor who's been a sole-source tower contractor for 10 years. The vendor's top executive was the chairman of the FCPS 2017 Bond Committee, which raised $300 million for FCPS Facilities Department, and that same vendor executive sits on the FCPS Board Foundation. Why would the board not want to engage a wireless expert? Is this about money? Is it about relationships? As it stands today, it's not about the kids.
Chris Ieio.
Chair Sanders and members of the board, my name is Chris Ieio. I'm a resident of Oakton and the proud parent of an FCPS student. Tonight, I will address the revised Policy 8335, which allows cell towers to be built on FCPS school properties. I want to begin by commending the Governance Committee for its engagement on this important safety and security issue. The proposed policy being considered tonight does reflect a small improvement over the existing policy. However, it lacks meaningful changes and does not reflect the community's input that has been provided over the last two years. The mission of FCPS is to educate and to ensure it does so in a safe and secure environment. The School Board has a fiduciary responsibility to us as parents and to our children and to their teachers to establish and consistently enforce policies and regulations that always align with placing safety and security above all other endeavors. Unfortunately, the revised cell tower policy falls far short of aligning with that principle. As the 10th-largest school system in the country, FCPS should be a demonstrated leader in establishing and administering sound policies. Instead, the smaller neighboring counties of Arlington and Loudoun are clearly more proactive in protecting their students as their cell tower policies firmly and plainly state that the safety, security, and health of students and staff will be prioritized when considering placement of cell towers on their properties. Parents suggested similar language be added to the FCPS policy, yet there's not a single mention of student or faculty safety in the revised policy. Why is that? The School Board should not adopt a revised cell tower policy until the following additional changes are adopted. First, prohibiting the placement of cell towers on elementary and middle school grounds. Allowing cell towers by exception only on high school properties. Establishing a minimum setback requirement to ensure cell tower placement does not interfere with future possible school expansion, and to help mitigate risks posed by cell tower presence. Prohibiting the granting of easements that would facilitate the placement of cell towers on properties immediately adjacent to FCPS school sites. Hiring an independent third-party consultant to evaluate the feasibility of all cell tower applications. Reserving all decision-making authority on cell towers to the School Board. And removing the reference to "promote commerce" in the Purpose section of the policy. To me, it's unconscionable that promotion of commerce is explicitly stated in this policy, yet the policy is completely silent on the safety of students. FCPS's mission is to educate, not to promote commerce, and the School Board should not risk students' safety for any amount of money. The fact that the School Board is doing so for only $1.9 million annually demonstrates a callous indifference to its constituents. The parent-community view oppose policy. Thank you.
Lonnie Liziette?
Hello, FCS board members and staff. My name is Lonnie Lizier, and I'm a Reston resident, a Fairfax County taxpayer, and a father to an FCS elementary school student. Tonight, you will review and vote on updates to Policy 8335, cell towers on FCPS properties, which are needed to protect the safety and security of FCPS students. The current 10-year-old policy is outdated. It does not require oversight by the School Board. It does not require communication to affected communities, and it does not require guidance from a wireless technology expert. A change is needed. We appreciate the efforts of the Governance Committee and the updates they are proposing. This is a positive step forward, but unfortunately, the updates recommended in the draft fall short. The updated policy you will review tonight does not include seven items requested by the community in the updated policy, as it continues to prioritize revenues of third-party vendors and does not protect FCPS. vendors and does not protect FCPS students. What do we, the community, want? Seven items. Safety and security of students and staff should be the foundation of Policy 8335, not commerce or revenue. FCPS land should be reserved for educational use only. Cell towers should not be allowed, except on exceptional basis. A policy that clearly states no cell towers on elementary or middle school properties and only by exception on high school sites with minimum setbacks. Monthly communication with a school community throughout pre-application and application process. Any community opposition will be deemed the cell tower not feasible and will not move forward. FCPS will not grant any easement right-of-way to adjacent landowners to facilitate cell tower construction in close proximity to an FCPS school. Example, placing a cell tower in a park next to an FCPS elementary school playground. FCPS will hire a third-party wireless telecommunications expert to validate needed and set guidelines for placements. As you think about the policy recommendation updates tonight, please ask yourselves, why would the FCPS Board support a cell tower policy that prioritizes third-party vendors and puts FCPS students at risk? Why would the FCPS run a program without having a wireless technology expert to advise facility departments? Why would the Board create a policy that doesn't include the regulations, but instead the regulations are set by the Facilities Department with no oversight or approval by the School Board? School Board members, additional updates to Policy 8335 are required if FCPS truly wants to achieve Superintendent's vision of being a world-class educational system and providing a safe environment for all students. After two years of discussion, we implore the School Board to demonstrate genuine leadership and incorporate the community's seven items. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm also here to talk about Policy 8335. I do want to start by saying thank you for reviewing the Policy 8335. We know who our advocates are for this, and we absolutely know who hasn't realized that this is a big deal. So that's why I am here tonight, is to help you understand how big of a deal this is to parents. I am speaking to every one of you here. We are paying attention, especially the parents like myself who have a child in elementary school in Fairfax County at Crossfield. We would have done anything and everything to keep that proposed tower from going up. A 13-story tower feet from an elementary school playground infuriated and mobilized the parents of Crossfield like nothing else has. We were ready to raise tens of thousands of dollars, donate hundreds of hours, recall our do-nothing board member. I was ready, and my fellow parents were ready to do what it took to ceaselessly demand a new principal, to clear out the Facilities Department, whatever it took. We were not going to allow that proposal to go through. Through that process of protecting our students, I learned that my rep, Pat Hines, was volunteering to meet with the vendor, yet she wouldn't meet with us, her constituents. I learned I essentially had the barbican stock of board members. I also discovered how other board members couldn't be bothered to listen to the parents. Thankfully, other members got it, and we remember. For those of you who have not realized it yet, how big of a deal this is, Crossfield was one elementary school. You will mobilize thousands and thousands of Fairfax County parents as your adversary. If you do not, update this policy to reflect what the community has asked. When you support cell towers and not the families of Fairfax County, you become the problem. Please adopt the seven recommendations we have asked for, and please don't make us your adversaries. We want to be your partners in this, but we will not stand for these cell towers to go on elementary properties, and that should be a no-brainer for you guys as well. So thank you for your time, and please make these changes.
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Vadnais. I'm the mother of four Fairfax County's public school students. Actually, three, one is in private school, but four Fairfax County residents. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the secondary course additions for the 2019-2020 school year. The Course Review Committee has submitted recommendations. Excuse me, I just came from work and I just hit traffic running over here, so I'm going to use 10 seconds of my time to catch my breath. The Course Review Committee has submitted recommendations to add eight new courses. It's obvious that there's been great deal of thought and research devoted to these additions and their impact on the academic and professional aspirations of our students. Of the eight new courses, I wish to specifically address three of them that involve science, scientific inquiry, data collection, and analysis. They are environmental science, NERCAD 1 and NERCAD 2. In the environmental science program, the sciences of biology, earth science, chemistry, and engineering are integrated. Students will focus on scientific inquiry and data collection and analysis through lab experience and fieldwork of the physical and natural world. In the NERCAD 1 and 2 course descriptions, students study normal human growth and development, simple body structure and function, and medical terminology. The course descriptions and the content of these courses are based on the laws of natural science, not on ideologies, ideologies which some insist are science. You have heard from hundreds of parents and citizens over the course of the last three years asking you to avoid introducing sexual orientation and gender identity into the lexicon of Fairfax County public schools. You have been cautioned by numerous medical professionals not to treat mental health issues such as gender dysphoria and natural human development. These recommendations have not been heeded. Now we see a frightening trend of rapid onset gender dysphoria in adolescents and young adults. This is a condition that appears during or after puberty in individuals who have not previously experienced gender dysphoria. And it is based on what is called a social contagia. A recent Brown University study says social and pure contagion can initiate and magnify mistaken beliefs. For example, beliefs that normal puberty stressors are proof of being transgender, or that the only path to happiness is transition, or that anyone who disagrees with the plan for transition is a transphobic, abusive, and should be cut out of one's life. There is a statistical correlation between transgenderism and autism and suicide. This is why you need to be careful with our young people, especially those going through puberty. In conclusion, I wish to congratulate the Fairfax County Schools Course Review Committee for sticking to the facts and the laws of natural science in the course descriptions and content of the proposed addition, and thank you very much for your consideration of my comments.
Good evening. I'm Cole Mallard, father of three former FCPS students and longtime Fairfax County resident and taxpayer. Recently, there have been a constant stream of speakers asking you to create a standardized policy for gender identity changes to Policy 1450. Several years ago, there was a standardized policy created but never enacted. Activist groups reject handling gender identity issues on a case-by-case basis. They're now calling for reinstatement of the standardized regulation, which allows access to bathrooms, locker rooms, showers, and by gender identity, not by sex. This is not acceptable for many reasons. First and foremost, Virginia laws unequivocally establish that minors require privacy in these spaces by sex, not gender identity. Although public schools are not mentioned specifically, Virginia has numerous laws protecting privacy by sex in a variety of facilities such as restrooms, changing areas, showers, homeless shelters, foster homes, and juvenile detention centers. The intention of these laws is clear: protect privacy from the sight of persons of the opposite sex in facilities where people demand privacy. Here are a few of the many laws which pertain to this issue. I can quote the actual law, but I'm going to save time by just saying, number one, school-aged children of the opposite sex shall not use the same restroom at the same time. Number two, separate sleeping and dressing areas shall be provided for children of the opposite sex over six years of age. Number three, children of the opposite sex over the age of two shall not share a bedroom. Residents shall be provided a level of modesty from routine site supervision by staff members of the opposite sex while bathing, dressing, and conducting toileting activities. That's number four. And last of this list, residents shall be provided privacy from routine site supervision by staff members of the opposite sex while bathing, dressing, or conducting toileting activities. These are only a few of the multitude of laws in Virginia which provide needed privacy for children. All laws specify that privacy is required from the opposite sex, not opposite gender identity. While the laws cannot possibly state every type of facility, privacy needs do not change depending on where you are. Privacy needs are the same everywhere, including at school. FCPS students are allowed to ignore these laws. It would be clear violation of the legal codes governing the privacy needs of children. It's your duty and obligation to spell this out clearly to school administrators, teachers, counselors, and PE instructors. No child in Fairfax County, including all public school students, should have the sex-based privacy needs violated. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen who have presented tonight, I do want to clarify that Policy 8335 on wireless towers is not going to be voted on tonight. It is the subject of New Business tonight and will be voted on on November 19th. So I know some of you thought we would be doing that tonight, but it is our next board meeting. This is New Business. Now we'll go to a video testimony.
So wait a on this. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I am one of more than 30 Latin language teachers in Fairfax County. I see under course offerings that you will be voting on adding a dual enrollment Latin III class at the secondary level. Please support this. Let me brag about our Latin language program in Fairfax County. Almost every high school in the county offers Latin, and several of our middle schools do so also. Taking Latin gives students the opportunity to study ancient literature, language, and culture in their pre-college years. But it also pitched the study of Latin as a way of improving students' writing and communication skills in English. In class, not only do we learn to read and write in Latin, we take a metacognitive approach and apply what we have learned about Latin words and grammar to our use of English. But Latin is also a way of accessing language study for students who may have anxieties or concerns about expressing themselves in front of their peers in speaking. Our program at West Potomac offers a special invitation to students with disabilities. The Latin language community in Fairfax has much to offer students. We are one of the most active Junior Classical League organizations in North America. Hundreds of Fairfax County students will attend the state convention in a couple of weeks in late November. Our dual enrollment Latin IV programs have been very successful in introducing students to collegiate level study in literature while they are still in secondary school. We find that students who may not be inclined to take as many AP classes participate in our dual enrollment classes and are thus able to access instruction at the highest level. Adding dual enrollment Latin III will boost the utility of our programs, giving students the opportunity to learn and explore Latin language at a collegiate level for two years while they are in secondary school. It is a wise move to add this as an option in our course offerings. Gratias vobis aga.
Now I call on Mr. Tignor for Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To start it off, I have something, it's sort of a way of thinking that I like to subscribe to and that has come up with a lot of my friends and things I've talked to people about in the past couple of weeks, and this is getting out of your comfort zone. This is one of the hardest things to do for people of any age, students in our school system as well, from K through 12. You know, it's something in your comfort zone might just be your home. It might be what you pack for lunch every single day. It might be your friends and who you talk to at school. It might be the route that you drive home after school. It might be your favorite ice cream flavor, an ice cream flavor that you eat. It might be the type of meat that you put in your Chipotle burrito, right? It's something, it could be completely random like that, or it could be something really deep. But what sort of is challenging these norms do for us and do for students? And there's actually a lot of benefits of challenging and sort of facing or stepping out of your comfort zone. It gives you an opportunity to grow as an individual. You learn something about yourself, increases your self-confidence, and you learn to deal with challenges. And also, one of the most important things is you build new friendships. And so what holds us back? And that's a big question, and a lot of times, what I see in my friends is fear, and it's fear from failure and fear from not being able to be successful. I have a quote I'd like to read from Will Smith, and he is after he went skydiving for the first time. So he says, "Fear is not real. The only place that fear can exist is in our thoughts of the future. It is a product of our imagination, causing us to fear things that do not at present and may not ever exist." And so this has some truths that I like to seek out from it, and one of them is that we cause ourselves to fear a certain situation. So we are afraid of stepping out of our comfort zone, but as soon as you do it, that fear disappears. And that's an important distinction to make. So it's easy to overlook the importance of growing as an individual as we pass through the FCPS school system as one in 187,000. So it is important not to let your fear of failure and from leaving your comfort zone hold you back. And so ask parents, teachers, and peers to sort of take those healthy risks and push the students that they have and their children and even their friends to take those healthy risks, to step out of their comfort zones and grow as individuals. For more of, I guess, the formal side, it's end of first quarter last week, which is really cool. So I hope that it went well for everyone and that you keep up your great work for the rest of the year. For seniors, technically, we have three quarters left, but we can sort of chill after the next quarter, after we send out those college applications, so stay in there, we're almost there. I met with Edison High School today as well, which was really fun. So we talked about homecoming results and how that went out, and they sort of got their input on some key issues about school safety, security, how they reduce stress, and sort of their thoughts on FCPS network limits. We did a bunch of great conversations that we had and some good input. Besides that, there's a cool topic that came up today, and that I think we've also talked about with some people here before, is sort of the idea of homecoming court and replacements for it. So it's sort of, there's always been like concerns that are addressed about gender roles, and a really cool way to address it, that South Lakes High School, the school I go to, adopted this year, was through spirit court. And spirit court is sort of embodying the week before homecoming, and that week for most schools is Spirit Week. So you dress up in cool outfits to fit themes that match for the theme of the dance that's at the end of the week. It's sort of a uniting element that brings everyone in the school together. And spirit court, instead of having an election for a homecoming king and queen, elects the person who's the most spirited throughout that week. So sort of a cool embodying element, and by the end of it, our big pepper really at the end of the week, a kid got elected and he got to run out and wear the big crown and all that kind of stuff and run around in the middle. It was really cool, sort of a new idea that some people could look at. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the Fairfax County School Board's state and federal legislative program.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Good evening, and we're glad to have an opportunity tonight to present to you Michael Malloy, our Director of Government Relations, who, year after year, really does an outstanding job for us in advocating and supporting our state and federal legislative program. Tonight, he's going to go over our one-pager. I want to remind folks that we will have a work session scheduled on Monday. I think it's the first topic up where we'll be able to go into additional detail over this legislative program. But for you all and for our public tonight, we wanted to give the highlights of some of the things that are new in this legislative program and maybe some changes that would be important for you to know about, and we look forward to the discussion in detail at the Monday work session. So, Mr. Malloy?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of board, good evening. I'm pleased to bring you, I guess, a preview of coming attractions of sorts. You do have a You do have a work session scheduled for Monday for a more in-depth discussion. But tonight I just wanted to walk through a little bit of information, both about kind of the policy environment that we find ourselves in, kind of things that are going on in Richmond and at the federal level, and then present to you some of the key staff recommendations for changes, additions, and subtractions from your existing legislative program. As you all know, the board adopts annually a legislative program. It's designed to inform policymakers and the community of the board's positions on a variety of topics. It tries to cover as many topics as we can kind of anticipate in terms of things that may come up and things that are of importance to the board. So in terms of where we find ourselves, you know, the Virginia General Assembly is a part-time legislature, so they only meet in January and February and a little bit into March. However, they work pretty much year-round. They do a lot of off-session work. They have committee meetings, they have studies, those types of things. So they spend a lot of time discussing issues. We have kind of an idea of the types of things that have been discussed over the off-session and then will probably come up during the General Assembly session in 2019. So just real briefly, student safety has been one of the primary discussions at the state level. They've had a fairly wide-ranging discussion of student safety, both on kind of the student mental health side of the world, but also in terms of physical and building safety, SROs, and other types of things. That's been a huge, a huge topic. And in fact, literally, probably two hours ago, we received kind of the next iteration of the House Select Committee's possible recommendations for changes that they're going to bring to the 2019 session. We're just now taking a look at them. They do meet, that Select Committee meets next week, next Wednesday, to talk about some of those recommendations. So between now and the work session, if there's additional information that we need to provide to you, we'll be able to do that. Other topics that have generated a good deal of discussion in the off-session, teacher recruitment and retention is an annual issue, but it's gotten some additional focus this year. Workforce development has been an issue that has been discussed in terms of not only college preparation, but also workplace preparation. So internships, externships, dual enrollment programs, those types of issues have been a subject of conversation. There's been a fairly wide-ranging equity conversation going on in the state, and I will caution you that an equity conversation statewide might look a little different than an equity conversation that we would have here in Fairfax County. Because of course, when you have an equity conversation statewide, you're talking about widely varying jurisdictions, poor jurisdictions, rural jurisdictions, urban jurisdictions. So the versions of equity they like to talk about and that tend to be part of the conversation are things like funding equity, which of course is one of your favorite topics as a board. School infrastructure and modernization, there've been some, there's been a working group that's gone around the state looking at kind of the infrastructure needs. The state has traditionally not taken much of a role in terms of local school facilities and school buildings. This group is looking at some possibilities for actually getting the state a little bit more involved in that. And then finally, tax policy. And by tax policy, there's a number of things that are going on that are going to have an impact on, potentially on state revenue. Federal tax policy changes, they will actually have a parallel change and a parallel impact on state revenues. And in fact, there's some discussion that there may be additional state revenues in part because of some of the changes at the federal level. And then there's been really kind of in conjunction with that infrastructure discussion, discussion about the state imposing the sales tax on internet sales. Right now, I know that there are some companies like Amazon that do collect internet sales tax, but not all do. So the state is exploring the possibility of expanding that because of Supreme Court ruling. So in terms of the staff recommended changes for your legislative program, primarily they're either additions or revisions to existing positions. There's not much here that are new positions. The board has taken positions on many different topics, and most of what you have in your program, it still remains fairly up-to-date in terms of conversations that are being had in Richmond. So these really are primarily revisions to what you've got right now. Just to walk through them, hopefully briefly. One change, and I wanted to highlight this one because it's a relatively minor wording change in your program, but the relatively minor wording change kind of, in some ways, masks the significance of some legislation that passed during the last General Assembly session dealing with attendance and truancy. You have a legislative program position about kind of changing some of the timelines about interventions for attendance and truancy. During the last General Assembly session, there was legislation that essentially did what your position asked it to do, which was to revise the timelines, which was to change kind of the mix of where and how interventions were applied to students for varying levels of attendance issues. We're recommending that you retain fairly similar language because those conversations obviously are going to continue on. So if additional legislation or if additional conversations do occur, that position really would still be relevant. But I did want to highlight that in some years, we would just recommend deleting this position out altogether because we were successful in helping to advocate for a number of changes on the attendance and truancy. Under college readiness and post-secondary education, there's two proposed changes. One really is kind of beefing up your existing position about dual enrollment courses. There have been some discussions about the possibility of there being kind of a uniform statewide tuition and some issues in terms of coordinating credentialing at the higher education level and at the K-12 level for dual enrollment programs. We just wanted to beef that language up a little bit, make it a little bit more clearer in terms of where we stood on some of those issues. And then there's some additional language, which would end up being a new position in that area on supporting additional work-based learning opportunities for students. Under employer-employee relations, the proposal there is to update existing language to more accurately reflect wording that exists in current school board policy. That's the nondiscrimination policy 1450. Under revenue alternatives, I discussed this a little bit in terms of the preview, but we're proposing language here on dedicating any sort of potential internet sales tax collections to public education. The language that we're proposing is relatively general. It's not saying a specific use for that revenue. I know the discussion at the state level has been on the possibility of applying that revenue to local school infrastructure. That may or may not be the best use of that funding for, from a local school division's perspective. So I think advocating that it be dedicated to public education is probably the right way to go, and then have the discussion about what the right mix, about whether or not that should be coming back to us just as general revenue or come back dedicated for a particular purpose. So that's, you'll see language in your revenue alternatives position on that. Under your special education position, this is language which actually mirrors some language that you already have under your standards of accreditation and standards of learning position, which deals with asking the state to provide some additional alternatives for students who have IEPs to demonstrate subject matter competency and to earn verified credits. So just some additional flexibility. It could be performance-based assessments. It could be, it could come in various forms, but this is just parallel language in the special education position to clarify that that advocacy would be for students that may have an IEP. Under standards, moving to the standards of accreditation and standard of learning position, there's two proposed changes there. One has to do with the way that dropout rates and graduation completion index cohorts are calculated. This has actually been a fairly longstanding issue for this board. There were some refinements to the staff's position on kind of how those calculations should be done. So that's being proposed. And then there's a second proposal under standard of accreditation and standard of learning, dealing with the new school quality profiles. And the new school quality profiles were adopted by the Virginia Board of Education, and they have a number of different metrics on which to look at school performance. And there are some kind of divergences between the school quality profile, what's in the standards of accreditation, what, how schools are measured for state accreditation, how schools are measured for federal accreditation. So this is asking for just some clarifications in terms of those divergences. So it's a little clearer in terms of how our schools are performing, that we're not being measured on multiple metrics and depending on kind of which system you look at. Under student health and wellness, two changes proposed there. One adds school counselors to existing language that you have in terms of advocating for additional state resources for student health and wellness. And then also expanding some language that you already have on local authority and flexibility over school health services. Two, how we would deliver school health services for student mental health, and also how we staff for school counselors. Also, under student health and wellness, there's a proposed new position, which is a more explicit support on the board's behalf of the current system that's in place in terms of allowing families to choose to participate or not participate in the existing family life education program. Annually, there were discussions about opt-in versus opt-out, and this would just make clear that the board's position would be in terms of keeping the current opt-out, the current opt-out system. And then finally, the last recommended change is to delete out a position because this one was successfully adopted during the last General Assembly session. And this had to deal, this had to do with flexibility on the board's behalf in terms of the timelines that you had to follow when you went through a superintendent hiring process. Those are the key staff recommended changes that are found in the legislative program. When you look at the work session documents, you will see the kind of the documents you're used to, you will see what we call the strike-through version of the 2018 legislative program, which shows, which highlights all of the changes. There were some other changes, but most of them are wording changes or changes for clarity. They don't really change the substance of your positions. So those are all available as part of the work session documentation. Before I wrap up, I did want to highlight that there were a few areas where the board may wish to have additional discussion when you get to your work session on Monday, some positions that are floating out about there. One has to do with the date of primary elections. There's been discussion, I guess, the Fairfax County registrar had brought this up, but then the issue was picked up by the state safety, the House Select Committee on School Safety, talking about the possibility of requiring a move in the primary election dates from the second Tuesday to the third Tuesday in June, on the theory that would help with school safety via with people coming in and out of school buildings, so it would be less of an issue with students being present or not present. One catch, of course, with this discussion has to do with one of your absolute favorite discussions, which is the Labor Day law, which has to do with when school boards are allowed to start school and by extension, when you're allowed to end school. Moving from the second Tuesday to the third Tuesday in June is helpful if you can start before Labor Day. It is not necessarily helpful if you cannot start before Labor Day. So there is some divergence of opinion in terms of how useful this would be for individual school boards and school division, and I'm laughing because yes, of course, it always comes back down to the Labor Day law. A couple of other issues that you may wish to weigh in on, this also has to do with the distinction between opting in and opting out. During the last General Assembly session, they actually adopted new rules in terms of sharing student directory information with things like PTAs and athletic booster clubs, and changed existing rules which allowed parents to opt out from that disclosure to actually requiring an affirmative opt-in, which means that parents would actually have to affirmatively say, yes, we do want this information to be shared. That has created some issues in terms of our communication with some external groups. This may be a policy that the board wishes to revisit in terms of advocacy in the General Assembly. I know that this board has discussed, and also the county has discussed, on a parallel basis, renewable energy policy. And I know that the county board has some language they're discussing as part of their legislative program, their legislative program process in terms of renewable energy policy, and it may be something that you wish to have a parallel discussion about. And then finally, every year, you've got the broad legislative program, but you try and boil down to a few positions that the board considers its priorities, and that will be part of your discussion also on Monday in terms of prioritizing and coming up with a few that you really do want to focus in on during the next General Assembly session. With that, Madam Chair, that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. I do want to remind my colleagues that we will be discussing the legislative program on Monday as part of our all-day work session. Having said that, I have a few colleagues who would like to speak tonight. Just, I remind you that we will have a fuller discussion on Monday, and if you have individual questions regarding the legislative program, if you could send those to Mr. Malloy over the weekend, that would be helpful so that he can be prepared for that. Yes, sir?
And actually, one thing that I will add is that we have, we do know that as part of the next steps for some of your previous work sessions, I guess there was a work session on proffers, there was a work session on project momentum, there were some, there was some discussion about possible legislative language that might be applicable. We do have all of those kind of queued up and ready to go in terms of a discussion on Monday as well. So we will be prepared to address, proffers will be prepared to address, I guess it was a step up in handle with care. There were some issues that came up with school accreditation, but we'll be in a position to talk about those on Monday as part of your next step request.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. With that said, I have Ms. Evans followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malloy. I appreciate the summary of the major changes, and certainly, the advocacy needs to continue on the standards of accreditation. And I'm glad to see that you pinpointed in particular the need to recognize our special challenges, particularly with, at schools that have large, significant numbers of newcomer students, and particularly those that come to us with very little formal education in their home country. So when Dr. Lane came and visited some of our schools in Mason District, he came and visited Glasgow and Justice High School and Bailey's as well, I think that was something that it was important to emphasize that particularly when we get into the graduation rates and the dropout rates, we don't want to have a double whammy. I know particularly at schools where we are challenged with older students coming to us who need more time and have, so I am particularly interested in that area and think that that's something that we need to emphasize at the state level, continue to emphasize at the state level, particularly with the changes that have been made. Many of them very good changes, but because we are going to be looking at chronic absenteeism, that certainly is something that is going to change what we do, and we need to continue our advocacy. Two issues I wanted to add, and you mentioned one of them, but I would add this for additional issues to be discussed on Monday. I've advocated that Avid be considered as a graduation credit, either in fine arts or in CTE. We're told that the state doesn't now allow us to do that. So I would ask that the board consider making that part of our advocacy at the state level for them to allow that excellent course to be considered. I'm not sure where it would go, so you know, I wanted to be, you know, prepare you for Monday, that I would like to see what exactly our language needs to be to have an amendment for that. I'd like, because I would like to have an amendment to the legislative package to advocate for that. I'm not sure where it goes, if it goes, well, I'm not sure where it goes. So I will, I will leave that to you, but I wanted to alert you that I'll be asking about that. And also, handle with care. I'm glad you mentioned that. And also, handle with care, I'm glad you mentioned that. I've been having discussions about that, both with staff and at the state level as well, to say, we would like to promote handle with care, at least we'd like to be able to explore it. For my colleagues who aren't familiar with it, this is a situation where a student may have been, had some sort of a trauma in their home. And right now, we have no way of knowing, you know, that when a student comes in and they have experienced a trauma, you know, of any kind, whether there's been violence in the home, whether there's been some sort of, or in the community. Handle with care is a method by which the police would be able to tell a school or the school system that we're not going to tell you exactly what happened because there are some privacy concerns there, but we are going to tell you something happened so you can realize that this child is, is coming into school fragile today. What I've discovered is that there are some limits at the state level, I think unintended, the law changed a couple of years ago, I've been told, that we, the police department now cannot share certain information about juveniles without the permission, the specific permission of parents. And so while that was intended to be a privacy issue, that has meant that it's been more difficult to deal with crises. And so I would like to see us advocate at the state level to amend that law so that both we can deal with crisis situations and we could at least explore enacting a handle with care, which I'm told a few jurisdictions have started doing that in other states. So we would need to see how that could be done. But, so I also would appreciate if you could tell me where an amendment such as that would go and what the language would be, because I would like to offer an amendment of that kind. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So I have a couple of questions. Can you go back? You were talking about a portion of the sales tax being dedicated to education. Is that correct?
Yes. What the proposal is, is because of a federal Supreme Court ruling about the ability of states and localities to actually apply a sales tax to internet sales that don't necessarily have a nexus to the state, it may be a sales, you know, so you make a purchase in Virginia, but you bought it from a company that's in Iowa, they, they would allow states to be able to collect the sales tax at the point of sale. So there's the potential that Virginia, if it were to go down the road of imposing that, that internet sales tax, could generate additional revenue for the state.
So you're not talking about that there's a proposed increase to the sales tax that would be dedicated?
No, no, no. This is, this would be, this would be a broadening of the application of the current sales tax to internet sales.
And you don't know at this point whether they're inclined to do that?
I don't know. I know, I do know that there's been a lot of discussion about this and there's been a lot of discussion about what to do with the revenue, when that revenue's been spent, as you might imagine, 10 different times.
The, the thing that concerns me about this, before heading down a position, taking a position on this, is one, I don't want to necessarily encourage the general assembly to raise taxes or expand their tax base. That's number one. And two, if they do, the likelihood that we're going to get any of it, I mean, right now, for every dollar that we send to Richmond, we only get 13 cents back on a dollar as it is. And the thought that we would somehow have a windfall from an expansion of taxes, I mean, on sheer representation alone, the rest of the state is going to come clamoring for that money. So I don't want us to be deluded into the sense that taking a position will necessarily even wind up benefiting us. So I want to, well, I'll explore that more with you on Monday. Number two is, when you got to the mental health recommendations, I did not hear anything about nurses. Why, why have we not included a more firm stance on who's paying for and what the ratio of, and including an increase of nurses in our school buildings?
You actually do have an existing position which advocates for additional state resources for nursing. This, the recommended change actually adds to that position, but you last year rewrote that position to be stronger in terms of advocating for additional state resources for nurses.
So we're just leaving everything on and piling on top of with the additional recommendations?
It, yes, it's in addition to an existing recommendation.
So how, you say, you said at one point, these are the staff's recommendations to the board. How are the recommendations generated?
Every year, we send the legislative program out to leadership team and to cabinet. Departments take a look at it, they, they look at it from the standpoint of things that have changed over the past year, things that are new priorities, things that are no longer priorities. And then they, they, they generate a set of recommendations for changes to the existing positions and that's what kind of gets compiled into this document.
Okay, but that's all administrators. Where do, you know, we, I'm not elected to represent administrators, I'm elected to represent constituents. So we're, I mean, this is the problem with the process that I have, is staff talks to themselves and generates a recommendation that comes to us and then we vote on it and off we go to the races. And I mean, you know I have a problem every time this time of year, because we have a legislative package that looks like this. You know, I consistently advocate to my colleagues, for the love of Pete, pick three, pick three things and let's get, you know, let's all go down to Richmond and let's get, you know, if we win one of three, then we'll be 1,000% more successful than we are every year when we send down 100. And our legislators look us in the eyes, you know, glazed over and saying, what do you really want? And we're like, well, here, here's, here's the panoply of choices. And none of it tends to reflect, has gone out to our constituency to say, what is it that you would like us to advocate to your other representatives in Richmond on your behalf in order to focus? And so, you know, this is like, you know, with the, with ACSD and special education. You know, I see a special education thing there and I'm like, who's talked to SEPTA? Who's talked to ACSD? Who's talked to special education parents? So you know, I'm just trying to understand this process of, well, you guys all talked amongst yourselves and brought a recommendation and, it's like the Paul Harvey rest of the story of, you know, we don't have staff like the board supervisors and they have these, you know, monthly legislative, and they draw out this whole thing and they have constituent services. I mean, we don't have anybody. So I would think that there would be some kind of legislative survey on the part of staff to talk to the parents that have children in our school system or who maybe have graduated from our school system and say, what, what would you like? Have you ever contemplated that?
It's, it's not something that's ever come up. Typically, that, that part of the discussion comes at the board level in terms of you all's input, because you all have, you all have contact with, with your constituencies and board members bring, bring issues to, to the table, you know, in addition to what, what staff brings. That's typically been how that, that part of the, of the process occurs. Also, you know, remember, we don't, we don't operate in a vacuum. The Virginia PTA, the Virginia School Boards Association, the Virginia, you know, there, there are, there are multiple organizations, both local versions of them and also statewide versions of them, that also have parallel positions on a lot of these same issues. So I spend a lot of my time working with my colleagues and working with other organizations that are kind of pushing, pushing or pulling in the same direction.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, to some extent, that's part of the answer is, is that there is some, you know, cross-communication happening with parent organizations, but that doesn't account for all of our schools that have a PTO instead of a PTA. And then a lot, a lot of people, you know, they're not a part of that, you know, that's, that's controlled by a handful of people. So I, I think we just have to have a very cautionary approach to we've, you know, we keep growing, because now the baseline is whatever our legislative package was last year and, oh, oh, by the way, this is the cherry on top, we're just adding more toppings.
Ms. Schultz, we can have a broader discussion about this.
I understand, I understand that, but the likelihood that the public is going to understand what we're doing with our legislative package is not going to come from our work session, it's going to come from whatever was presented tonight. So I think it's important for us to, and we don't have a very full agenda, so it's okay. This, these, you're talking about taking stances as a board and representing people on things and that what's seen here is only, I mean, this is like a little tiny bit of what's on the legislative package, it's, it's a lot more than that. So I will, once again, I will advocate to my colleagues that we pick and we narrow our field of focus for efficacy and with a goal in mind that we're going to get something passed to just a couple of things that are really important, that will really move the needle with, with our representatives down in Virginia Assembly and we'll talk more on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin, please.
Thank you. Just to my colleagues, I'm the, this year's federal liaison. Ryan McElveen will be traveling, so I'll be presenting as meeting manager on this one. Will he be back in time?
Mr. McElveen will be back in time on Monday.
For the, well, he's not listed as a meeting manager, so.
I think the two of you are doing it.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, because I met with Mr. Malloy for about an hour and a half to walk through this to make sure we'd be ready to go on Monday. It is an hour and a half. Some people might say, wow, that's more time than we need, but I think as Ms. Schultz has demonstrated, I think we'll be using the hour and a half to its full extent. I, I did want to just let everybody know that based on our most recent work sessions, I'm going to advocate again that we try our new process where board members will have three minutes on their turn to speak to the topics that they want and then to close out with the questions you would like to ask Mr. Malloy and then he knows to go ahead and answer your questions. But this way, people can have go-backs, but it's sort of a way of having sort of a disciplined, you know, three minutes at a time for us to speak to any, any given part of this. I also wanted to just prepare you in advance to please go through, as you'll see, the key staff recommended changes. It's in bold, so if you follow it, that will show you exactly where the change is on that page under each one of the sections. So the first letter indicates which section you'll find that in the document. I think it's about 19 pages. The other thing is that we have not in the past had a standalone federal legislative priority. It's usually just kind of been collapsed in behind the state. So I did ask Mr. Malloy that if we could even just reformat the federal, the way it's presented a little bit so that it'll be a little more clear and that we might end up having, again, some federal priorities that we want to focus on, whether it's impact aid or whether it's IDEA funding and things like that. And then, just in terms of what Ms. Schultz was talking about priorities, and I had also had this with Mr. Malloy about where does this sort of direction come? And so I wanted to kind of set a tone that these legislative priorities are, yes, voted on and approved by the board, but we are one school division. And so these priorities need to be the division priorities. So the staff feedback to the leadership team, to the superintendent, to us, I mean, they handle operations on a day-to-day basis. So understanding what is going to be our mission critical focus for the 2019 legislative calendar, I mean, that is on this one pager where you look in the section where it's key policy issues and environment and then under the section additional issues for board discussion. I would recommend people look at those bullets and then if you decide that something's missing, make that one of your key things you want to share with each other. But Dr. Braybrand, I know you've been traveling and it's wonderful to have you back. And so I did say to Mr. Malloy, I wanted to kind of prepare you in advance on Monday that it will be very helpful to have you through, and again, through you and your team to be able to explain in terms from an operational perspective, what are some of the key challenges we have with existing state legislation that having the full force of this board's voice as the largest school division in the Commonwealth, that's what I think Ms. Schultz is kind of trying to say. But not that we're ceding our own constituent input, but you guys understand the operational challenges we face every year. So I want you to be prepared on Monday that we're going to kind of look to you and your team to speak to that.
Yep, we will.
Okay. So that's it for now.
And Ms. Palchek, please.
Thank you, thank you, oh, thank you, Mr. Malloy. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You're about to go into your busy season. I, I look forward to Monday, but just had a couple of questions that haven't had a chance to go through our full package. Does it include in there the dual licensing requirement for elementary language immersion teachers?
Yes. Not only does it include language, but during the last general assembly session, there was legislation passed that requested that the state board create a separate licensure. Now unfortunately, when you ask the state board to do something, there is an entire regulatory process that you have to go through, which it, the process is set forth in code and actually takes a long time. Let's just, let's just put it that way. But that is something that the state board is looking at and is now required to put into place in the near future.
So there's no further action required other than looking at Dr. Durian?
Well, other than actually, we'd be, we'd be involved in the process at the state level of creating that new licensure. As they, as they develop the licensure requirements, we would be able to have input in, in terms of what those requirements look like.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, and I know Ms. Heinz is not here tonight, she and I would like to look at preferably joint priorities on the renewable energy with the board of supervisors. So if you could maybe give us a heads up of what's needed, do we need to meet with you and Claudia or?
Actually, I already have the draft that the board of supervisors has been looking at in terms of their language and then can bring that on Monday. And in fact, I can share with you in advance just to let you see what, where they're placing their priorities. It's not, it really is not long language, so it would, it would fit in the program fairly easily. In terms, our styles in, in how we approach our programs between the board of supervisors and you all are a little different. But I think that the language would be, would be parallel.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
And Ms. Palchek, along those lines, Chairman Bolova has agreed to having a joint meeting on those issues as well.
Meeting or summit? This is just a meeting?
I don't think we called it a summit, but we'll work on the exact language for it, but she's agreed to doing something between the two boards on this issue.
Between the four boards, not just the two. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. We look forward to seeing you on Monday.
Thanks very much.
And thanks for your hard work on this. Now I call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the strategic plan priorities.
Yes, I, as you know, we've been working, this board, under Dr. Garza, created a strategic plan called Ignite. It was a strong, strong foundation to set the parameters for the future direction of the school system. I've spent the last year and a half as superintendent working to help prioritize that strategic plan and bring some additional refinements to it per the school board's direction. And we really appreciate all of your support. We created our areas of focus for the next two years to kick off the beginning of the school year this year through a year-long process with you last year. And tonight, we want to really finalize that strategic plan focus. And Marty Smith has been a great leader in pulling all of this together, departments, principals, all of our stakeholders, the board, and really has pulled together the strategic plan focus with some additional information on targets and baseline data and metrics that he wants to highlight tonight. And then we'll have time at the work session to go into more detail. And hopefully at the work session, we can answer any questions and then really finalize our focus for the next two years for the strategic plan. So Mr. Smith, would you like to begin? And thank you again for your leadership in bringing this plan to fruition.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand and Madam Chair, the board. Tonight, I'm very excited to be bringing our updates to the strategic plan. And as Dr. Braybrand said, that this is our opportunity to begin carrying it over the finish line. And, and while Dr. Braybrand did say that I had led this work, I really do have to thank my colleagues on the leadership team and their staff for actually, it's been a very collaborative effort to get the plan to where it is today. I also have to thank Dr., or Lady Haruda, who's the director of the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, and her staff, as well as my office staff of Julie Fowler and Tracy Sken for getting the plan to where it is. And so today, I'm going to provide an outline of our work to date. We have an outline. provide an outline of our work to date. We have an outline of the presentation this evening where we're going to explain what success looks like. We're going to talk about our metrics and our aspirational statements. We're going to provide that update. Since July, we've been very active working with our metrics, working with our baselines and working with our targets. And then we're going to show you what we're going to actually accomplish by the end of the year 2020 with our targets. And then hopefully, set you up and prepare you for Monday so that we can finalize the strategic plan focus. And so we talked about what success looks like. And so we have a few definitions that you're going to see and hear tonight and that you'll see here, see and hear more of on Monday. When we look at aspirations, it's really what we hope to see with our desired outcomes when they're fully realized within the plan. Our metrics are those data points that we're going to use to assess progress toward our aspiration. We have three-year baseline data that we have in the plan that is just an average of our level of performance during the most recent three years prior to the upcoming reporting schedule. And then we have our targets that we're going to tell you how we actually establish those targets. And we'll have an opportunity to go through some sample targets this evening and then really delve into them on Monday. And I do want to let you know that we've recognized school year 2324 as that aspirational year for our targets. So when you look at this six-year window, we've broken and chunked our work into three discrete periods within that six-year window. I'm actually going to ask that we go to slide five for this next bit of the presentation. And so to share with you that we've been working diligently since July to update the plan and bring it where it is, you did approve at our July work session, the use of what we call the front page. And you see it there on the screen in front of you. It's our strategic focus. We actually used a lot of your language to update the language to the strategic focus. Dr. Brabran presented that strategic focus at our leadership conference. It was an overwhelming success. We have distributed this to all of our schools and our offices in Fairfax County. And it's been one of the most successful distributions of posters that we've had in Fairfax, with many people asking for more copies that they can place in other places. We gave each school two, and they've actually wanted more. So we thank you for your input in helping us get the plan to this point. And as you can see, the strategic focus, it really has who we are as Fairfax County. We have Portrait of a Graduate. We have our four goal areas of student success, caring culture, premier workforce and resource stewardship. And then at the lower left-hand corner, you can see the learning model that we use to drive instruction in Fairfax. You'll note that we have the Closing the Achievement Gap framework. And then you'll see that our connection to One Fairfax, which is the policy that we jointly developed to drive the work of the county and drive the work of the school. So very successful distribution, very successful rollout, and we're happy to actually get it to the next steps. If we go to the next slide, one of the questions that was, that came up in our July work session was really about the aspirational nature of the plan. If you remember and recall, some of the targets we established had percentage pass rates that weren't quite at 100. We had some 90%, we had some 70%. We really wanted to make this, that aspirational plan be for all students. And so we chose some language that says "all students." And so it's important to note that as we're going to report to you with our targets and baseline data in future goal reports, we're going to report on all students and getting to that 100% is for all students. And then after we are able to provide that data to you, we'll be able to then go back and compare that data to where we were in the past to ensure that we're moving forward appropriately. When we do say "all students," it also addresses some of the concerns that members of our community have had about not representing all students within the plan, and specifically, students with disabilities. And so as we report to you, we're going to highlight the baseline target and performance of all student groups that we have listed here on the page to include our students with disability. The next slide really takes us into our targets and how we establish the targets for the plan. In any important aspect of a strategic plan, you really have to focus on setting those priorities. So we have priorities within our plan. We have clear desired outcomes within our plan. And then you certainly have to develop and set those targets for success. So when you look at how we develop the targets for success, we calculated the distance between the three-year baseline and the aspiration. And so you'll see in the document that we have baseline data. And the distance between the baseline and the aspiration for many of our goal areas is getting our students to 100%. We then divided that distance into three equal increments of growth. And so for this first go-around, it's the years 18 to 20. And so we're looking at that growth in this first two-year period. And then we made adjustments to those targets based on previous trend data for those particular student groups. And so we had some student groups that were further away from the aspirational target of 100%. And so knowing that those groups might need a bit more time, we adjusted those targets down by five percentage points to give them the time that they needed and also really for staff and the board to see that we might need to expend additional resources for, in order for us to reach those particular targets. We have an example here. And if you look at that example, we've noted that mathematics for economically disadvantaged students, the baseline pass rate is 67%. So in order for us to get to 100%, we would need to show 11 percentage points growth every two years. And so we applied that downward trend of five points, five points down, so that we could establish an attainable target for those students while realizing that that's an area where we would need to expend additional resource. And so that's a topic starter for the board and for staff as we hope to get our students to meet those particular growth areas. We also want to highlight that we're going to readdress this every two years. And we're going to reestablish those targets based on the performance of students during the course of that two-year period. We now have an opportunity to get into the worksheet that we have actually sent to the board for the past couple of weeks with updates to baseline data and updates to targets. And so this is your homework, in a sense, to get you prepared for Monday's work session. And what you see on these worksheets is that we have the what for what we expect our students and staff to be able to do. We have the how, how we'll get there. And then we have a variety of aspirational statements that show what we want our students and staff to be able to do. I'm not going to actually go through all of these tonight. We will have an opportunity to go through these on Monday at the work session. And I know that you've all done your homework and we'll come with great questions on Monday. But I do want to be able to highlight one of these aspirational statements in each goal area this evening so that you can get a sense of what we'll be talking about on Monday. And so initially, we're going to start with the what on eliminating gaps in opportunity access and achievement for all students. And the how for that is we're going to transform our current practices to ensure that all students achieve academic excellence through staff use of the Closing the Achievement Gap framework. I've highlighted with an asterisk the one success statement that we're going to look at tonight. And so I'm going to ask Anne to click on that, and she already has, that statement is being successful. We want our students to be successful in reading and mathematics. If you're following along on paper, you should go along to, this links to page 14 in the presentation. So you can see there, we've established our three-year baseline data for all of our student groups. And then we've established those targets where we want our students to be at the end of the 1920 school year. And you'll note the asterisk for economic disadvantaged students, our English learners, and our students with disabilities. While they were a bit further from the aspirational target, we felt that it was important to set those targets at our Virginia accreditation standards. And so the accreditation standard for reading is 75% pass rates. So we set those targets at 75% for those students, again, who were further away from the target. We're going to ask you to go back to slide 10 now. And for caring culture, goal two, you can see that the what is that all FCPS employees will demonstrate, oh, I'm sorry, the what for that is that FCPS will use best practices to enable students and staff to make healthy life choices. The how with this is that we're going to increase school and department awareness and use of practices that support positive individual wellness. And the highlighted aspirational statement is that all students will report healthy, social, and emotional skills. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Brabran. And so with that, you can see the data that we've used for the baseline. We look at 64% of our students will actually report that as part of the youth survey. And the target that we've established is that 76% of our students would actually report healthy, social, emotional skills on the Fairfax County Youth Survey. If we go to slide 11, when you look at premier workforce, we focused on the what of recruiting, hiring, and retaining exceptional employees. And we want to focus on the fact that the diversity of our hired teachers will match the diversity of our qualified teacher applicants. Going to slide 16, you can see here that we've developed some metrics where the diversity of our hired teachers will be compared to the diversity of our qualified applicants. And that's really looking at our hires as compared to the pool. If you look at the charts on the right, you can see that that's the diversity of our hired teachers. And those percentages should actually match the percentages on the left, which is the diversity of our qualified applicants. And because we're looking at percentages, you'll note that as some groups actually increase and match the pool, we would see that some groups would actually then decrease as they're matching the pool. So I'm going to go through the metrics on this slide because it could be a bit confusing. But if you look at the three-year baseline data, for our Asian teachers, our Asian teachers, the diversity of our hired teachers is actually the same as our qualified applicants. And so we would expect to maintain within these two years. If you look at our black teachers, they are, the diversity of the hired teachers is 5% below the qualified applicants. And we want to close that gap so that it actually matches over the next six years. And so getting us there a bit closer, we would see that we would reduce that to 3% of our black teachers would be below the qualified applicants. For our Hispanic teachers, we are the same as our qualified applicants. So we want to maintain our work in that area. For our white teachers, we see that we are 9% above the qualified applicants. And this is an area where, as the percentages change, we would actually then see that white percentage go down to actually match the number of applicants in the pool and not be greater than the number of applicants in the pool. And we note then that we have for our male teachers that they are 9% below our qualified applicants. And so we want to close that gap. And for our female applicants, they are 10% above the qualified applicant pool. And so as we increase the numbers of male in the pool, we would also decrease the numbers of females in the pool. And so this just gives you a sense of the data that we would be looking at as we're going to report out to the board with the goal three report. And then lastly, if we go to slide 12, you can see that for resource stewardship, the what is that fiscal budgeting and allocation will maximize our effectiveness and efficiency. The how is that we're going to enhance our FCPS process for allocating resources to consider strategic initiatives, equity, and effectiveness. And the aspirational statement that we're looking at tonight is that we're going to maintain schools that all students, families, and staff consider safe. So if you fast-forward to slide 17, you'll see that we've established a metric where it's based on the percent of students who report their school is safe on the state climate survey. We will also be looking at data from families in our engagement surveys and for staff who report that their work sites are safe on the state climate survey. It's also important to note that while we've had state climate surveys for our middle and high school students for a select group of those schools in Fairfax County, the state will be rolling this out this year to all of our schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And we'll be looking at students and staff for fourth grade through 12th grade. And you'll see that we've established those baselines and the targets. And the families is currently under development because the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, they are currently developing that survey. And we should be piloting that survey in the spring of 2019. So if we go to our last slide, it's our hope on Monday that we're able to finalize the plan. We are, we'll be there with all of our champions at the table so that we can answer any questions that you might have about some of the baselines and targets that we have grayed out in the presentation tonight. But they will be available for us to talk about on Monday. Again, we appreciate all of your efforts in helping us get to this point. I feel strongly that the plan is a much stronger plan than it was. I feel strongly that your input has helped us refine and helped us really get to where we need to be for our students and for our staff and for our community. And I'm really looking forward to an engaging discussion on Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I want to remind my colleagues that we will have a fuller discussion of the strategic plan enhancements on Monday's work session. And so board members are encouraged to review the document that was presented tonight and submit questions to Mr. Smith in advance of that work session. Having said that, I do know that I have a couple of colleagues who would like to speak tonight about this work. And so I would like to start with Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And thank you, everybody. I am very excited with the, with what is being presented. I do believe that we have refined our strategic plan. I really appreciate the strategic focus. We tried to do this, I think it was maybe 10, 15 years ago, where we had had strategic goals and tried to put metrics to it, but it was at a time where there was discomfort with some of the assessment tools that were given to us. There was a lot of goal polls moving with No Child Left Behind. It didn't speak enough to the wholeness of the child's well-being. And it certainly was far from Portrait of a Graduate. So I see this effort to be much more complete, I think much more appropriate for what we really want to do for our children. I really do like the approach. I look forward to our discussion. I think the metrics, again, are much more in line with what we see as our goals and what it is that we really want our children to be able to do and the kinds of graduates we want them to be. So I look forward to the discussion and I congratulate you all. I think this is one of the best efforts that I've seen us do. We know that we must be accountable. We know that we have to set goals. And we have to be able to measure our progress towards those goals. And I really do think this gives us a much better tool. I also, again, with the progress of Project Momentum, which we looked at at our last work session, that, I think, gives us the hope that we can actually meet these goals over time. Again, Project Momentum has been, we've already seen the success. And I, for one, believe that the approach, that instructional support in the classroom, in our schools, that that will, in fact, be the overall instructional tools that will actually get us to meeting these targets. So congratulations. I'm very excited. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Strauss, Project Momentum was really one of those drivers that we looked at as we established those targets. And at first, wanting to set targets that were attainable, but then pushing ourselves a bit more and knowing that we'd found success and have seen success with Project Momentum and knowing that if we apply our resources appropriately, then we can get there. So that was a major driver in how we got to some of the targets around student success.
Thank you. I also have Mr. Man, please.
I look forward to, Mr. Smith, I look forward to a more discussion on Monday. And I may send in some questions in advance over the weekend. But I want you to know that in addition to what is already on page number 16, an aspirational, you know, statement that diversity of hired teachers statement that diversity of higher teachers will match the diversity of qualified teacher application, teacher applicants, you probably can guess at this point, because I've done this many years over, and you heard me say this, asking the same question. I'm going to repeat those questions on Monday. You know, for me, what you put out as aspirational statement, that is, that is an important statement at the same time. What you are doing regarding diversity, diversity of qualified applicants to reflect the diversity of the student body, you know, to me, that is even more important. Because as I see it, you know, less than 50%, probably about 40% of our student population is white, but 66%, about two-thirds are white. So we got a long way to go before we increased the more qualified minority teachers to actually apply to us.
And so thank you, and Mr. Moon. While we didn't have it in tonight's presentation, it is part of the larger document. We do have an aspirational statement that focuses on the diversity of qualified teacher applicants matching the diversity of Fairfax County. So we can have a discussion about that on Monday, and I'm looking forward to a good discussion about that.
And I'm looking forward to probability from responses this time than the same response I have gotten over the years.
Thank you. With that, I, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I will not be at Monday's work session, so I'm just going to make a few comments now, and I will may send in some questions. Having Mr. Malloy's presentation and having you follow after that is kind of a full-circle moment for me. One of the reasons that I so wanted a strategic plan when I first got on the board is I was the state legislative liaison, and we had a package, and they understood completely what our legislative priorities were. When they asked, what are your overall priorities? We came up with several different answers. And me being the one standing up there, it was a little difficult because we heard different answers from board members, we heard different answers from staff, and we heard different answers from our superintendent. So when, there were a lot of people who resisted the initial strategic plan, and there were some of us that were real advocates. And Mr. Velkoff and I were one of, former board member and I were one of real advocates. And it was painful. It was painful at first to go through the process of trying to figure out where we were, what we needed, what should our priorities? And you know that, and you were there. You were the champion, one of the champions, the whole way through. Taking, taking groups of us together and looking at it and saying, how can we work on this? How can we synthesize the kitchen sink and then some into? And so it's taken a while. It's been refined, but I, but I thank you. I thank you for analyzing, synthesizing it, prioritizing it, and now to the point where we're adding metrics and data, goal setting, and I know we're working on aligning these goals with our budget as well.
Yes.
So we have come so far. Thank you. I know you've been instrumental, you and your team have been instrumental in doing it. It has been, every board member has advocated it for, at this time around, on this board and this term. And it's just wonderful to see that, and then to be able to say to people, these are our goals, these are our initiatives. Looking at it also through an equity lens is something that I, I know we're doing by some of the things you have out there, by the slide that's up there right now, the premier workforce. So thank you. I'm sorry I will miss Monday's work session, but I will certainly be reviewing it and looking forward to hearing what my colleagues say and then adding to that discussion when I return.
Great. Thank you.
I'm very glad you put your light on because it set up exactly what my comments were, which is that you've done such a great job of really prioritizing and focusing in on what are achievable goals over the short term and our aspirational goals over the longer term. And so I think that we are well on our way. We've made significant progress. And then the commitment to linking this to our budget priorities really make us a better-managed organization, but also one that allows us to make informed decisions on how we allocate our resources and make sure that our allocation of resources are focused in the same, on our priorities. So I really appreciate it, and I look forward to a robust discussion on Monday. I don't have any other colleagues who have shown an interest in speaking about this tonight. Dr. Braybrand, do you have any comments on this?
I just want the board to know and the public, as a leadership team, we have spent more time in our meetings talking about the strategic plan the last 18 months than maybe you'd ever believe. Fussing a little, fighting a little, I'm sure what the board went through at the beginning, us trying to really say, how do, the board wanted this refined, how do we do it? Maybe now the finished product looks easy, and it's not finished. We need your feedback on Monday and continual feedback. This is going to be a living document. But trying to get it down, I think that's the ultimate in accountability that the board expects, this community expects, and we look forward to the conversation on Monday. And Marty and the entire team have really done an outstanding job, and this has been one of the key focuses over the last, the last 18 months of my time being here.
So, Dr. Braybrand, your comments sparked comments by two of my colleagues. I'd like to first have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Palchek.
I just want to, I do want to acknowledge the degree of effort that the staff has put into this. And it's been a little bit push-me-pull-you, but the space where we're not cat three, you know, I often say, we're really good about talking about what we do well. We're not so great about talking about what we don't do well. But that's where the gold is. That's where the opportunity is. That's the, you know, the Chinese character of chaos being opportunity. And so some of us, Ms. Darnett Kofax, just for clarity, ran originally for the school board on one of the things of getting the division to strategically focus and to be deliberative. And we're on the cusp of, you know, finally, it's been hard. You know, in an organization this size, 40,000 employees, 100 and now almost 90,000 students, doing something intentional that has not been done, there's no muscle memory. And so the fact that we're there and I'm whispering like, oh, I think we should change the, even as, even as you were presenting, but we're getting there. And the fact that people are asking in the schools, when I'm visiting the schools, when I'm meeting with my administrators, my principals of my schools, and they're saying, it's sort of, things are gelling, like they're understanding the one-pager, and now there's sort of a clarity of focus. Instead of random or initiative and initiative and initiative and initiative, now we all understand where we're going. And now you start to direct the public's resources because we are stewards of the public's resources. And that, putting that resource stewardship on the, and we don't have the one-pager up, but putting that first block in, that's the biggest rock. You know, if you don't apply and respect, you know, and we had speakers here this evening, you know, speaking from their perspective, the resources in a way in which it meets their values and their expectations, everything after that's wrong. And so we're getting there, and I'm, and I'm appreciative for the, for the work that's demonstrated. I look forward to ongoing conversation.
Ms. Palchek, you'll have the final word on this until Monday.
Well, Ms. Schultz, I think we were on a similar channel today. I know it's not often the case, but tonight, I, I was thinking back at what Ben Tignor said earlier, and that we, as well as our students, need to do a better job of taking chances and being okay with failure and learning from it and the process and seeing where we're failing and where we need to make progress. So I just, again, want to say, I agree that this is beyond, I think, even what I expected for tonight. I think we really have the metrics. We're showing where we are and where we need to get to, and how, and we'll have a conversation of how we get there. So I do, I think, like Ms. Schultz does, we often talk about what we do well, constantly, what we do well. And we do a lot of things well, but I know that there's frustration figuring out what we're not doing well, how we focus on it, how we finance it, and, and we all now have this framework. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you. I am very impressed with the amount of work, energy, and cohesion that has come into this final work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Smith, you earned a very good weekend, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll see you Monday.
We'll see you Monday.
So now we'll do the confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with serious criminal offenses related to a community-based incident and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
So I have seconded, seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, Mr. Moon, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Palchek. Those against? Those abstaining? We have Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, and Mr. Wilson. That motion passes. I now call on Ms. Darnett Kofax for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought a weapon to school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? That is Ms. Palchek, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Moon, Ms. McLaughlin, McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, those, oh, Ms. Schultz. Those against? Those abstaining? Mr. Wilson. That motion passes. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm, oh, I'm sorry, consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 6.01, award a contract for the Laurel Ridge Elementary School roof replacement to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean, Inc., in the amount of $221,410, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.02, award the contract for the running track replacement at South County High School to Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $335,013, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.03, award a contract for the Annandale Terrace Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Crowley, Inc., in the amount of $20,945,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, appoint the individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item seven, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, approve the proposed revisions to Policy 8335 wireless telecommunications facilities as detailed in the agenda item. 7.02, approve proposed revisions to the Strategic Governance Manual as detailed in the agenda item. 7.03, approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2019-2020 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item. 7.04a, adopt the resolution approving the 2019 sale of school bonds, and b, authorize the chairman or vice chairman with the advice of legal counsel for the school division to negotiate, execute, deliver, and administer the school board tax certificate and all other documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed by the agenda item. 7.05, adopt the 2019 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program. 7.06, accept the recommended changes to the strategic plan. Eight, superintendent matters. Next on the agenda is the superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Last night, I got to attend the Chantilly Pyramid Latino Partnership for Success. It was presented by the Hispanic Leadership Club, and it was a real emphasis on our Latino students' dreams and challenges and successes. It was very well attended. Hundreds of parents were there. We had principals from every one of the school pyramids there. And I want to thank Scott Poole, principal of Chantilly High School, for hosting it, and Anna Boserman, who is the parent liaison there, who did just tremendous work. And I know how tremendous the work is because she's the parent liaison at Chantilly and at Fairfax High, and she was the liaison when I was there 13 years ago. And she has been delivering these events with hundreds, hundreds of folks, community folks are out before the event with booths from Fairfax County, different community groups. Kaiser Permanente offered free medical care to up to 50 people. Just tremendous. Kids told their stories. And we can do this not only in this pyramid, but I'm already working with our folks. Family engagement is one of the closing the achievement gap framework strategies. We can do this in every pyramid, and not just for Latino students, for all of our students and families, particularly those who've not always felt welcome in the school or how to get connected to the school. So it was a very powerful night, and I was honored to be there and share some remarks in Spanish, which my Spanish was okay, but still needs a little work. But I think the message got across. I also want to share with you, FCPS seniors took the SAT, and in 2018, we exceeded the state and national averages. We saw a 28-point game. And I know, I know how it is around here, so how did everybody else go? The state did 15 points better. We did almost double, 28 points. Tremendous, tremendous gains. Really excited about that. Our overall mean score was 103 points above the Virginia average and 164 points above the U.S. average. And we're just really, really, really thrilled with that work. Many of our schools are giving targeted, one of the biggest gains, I know a board member may want to share about that, so I don't want to take too much of it away, but we had some, some schools with over 40-point gains. West Potomac High School was one of them. Lee saw tremendous increases. Again, we will be putting out something later this week to the board with a school-by-school score comparison and to the public. But we're pleased overall with the division and with our individual schools. And many of the schools are beginning to target SAT prep as one of the interventions that they're doing during the instructional day for kids, and it's really paying off. So 60% of our seniors, by the way, in the class of 2018, took the senior class. So this is not just 10, 15, 20% of the kids. Of course, we'd like to continue to increase participation in the SAT, and that will be something we'll continue to work on. I also want to commend all of our schools in Fairfax County who are going to be recognizing through a variety of activities Veterans Day here in 2018. We owe a great sacrifice to those who've served this country. I want to, there's so many things, I know if I say one, but I got to make one activity of note. At Hayfield Secondary, former First Lady of Virginia, Dorothy McAuliffe, will present the school with the Purple Star Award. She is now Governor Northam's designee for the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Ed on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which tries to level the playing field in Virginia and across the country for military kids as they move from system to system and school to school. She'll be joined by Colonel Warren Lamont, retired USAF Colonel, and Colonel Michael Greenberg, who's the Fort Belvoir Garrison Commander. And the recognition was announced by VDOE and the Virginia Council on the compact, and it will recognize military-friendly schools that have demonstrated their commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected students and families. I want you to know, that designation that the state has done, we have 14 schools among the 59 in the state who have received this designation. I just mentioned Hayfield, but let me mention the others. That includes Claremont Elementary, Colton Powell Elementary, Flint Hill Elementary, Fort Belvoir Primary, Fort Belvoir Upper, Hunt Valley Elementary, Lane Elementary, Longfellow Middle, North Springfield Elementary, Rocky Run Middle, Sangster Elementary, Sunrise Valley Elementary, and Wayne Wood Elementary. So really, really proud of our schools for going over and above. All of our schools are doing something, and many of our schools are going over and above and getting state recognition for what they do. Finally, Mr. Tignor, I got to tell you, every time now you speak, I'm left with, I'm just left inspired about getting out of your comfort zone. Being superintendent in Fairfax County Public Schools the last 18 months has put me out of my comfort zone, and sometimes I have failed. But then you get a night like tonight on something with the strategic plan where you see hard work, and when you've even failed on a few things, where we did a few drafts earlier on, and go back and rework it, and you can get to a place where you can feel like the taste of success is coming. So your words spoke to me, and I think to all of us here, and that's what we're trying to do on the strategic plan, on many other things here in Fairfax County. So thanks for your words, and board members, thanks for your comments tonight. We look forward to the work session on the strategic plan and the other topics that we have for Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Now we have board committee reports, and I call on Ms. Palchek for an update from the Public Engagement Committee.
Yes, thank you. On Monday, I'm sorry, on October 29th, the Public Engagement Committee met for our first meeting of the year. We discussed two topics that were remaining from the past committee. The first one was on improving notification, and we're just happy to report that John Torrey is working with county staff and has created the new upcoming events and calendar. I know most board members have found it to be very helpful. Please, if there are other comments, please send them to us or to John directly if he would like additional things to be done there. In addition, he has connected with his counterpart in the county to see about better coordinating calendars, helping us have heads up on when things are coming, and vice versa. So we look forward, and thank you, John, for that continued work. The other matter had come to us from one of our members to see if we could confirm residency of constituents who mail the board. We discussed the potential options to determine it, considered cost factors and necessity. The overall outcome was that it seems it's pretty prohibitively expensive and time-consuming to go and try to understand from every email where it's coming from. So that's where that was left. At the work session, PEC under the leadership of, or at a future work session, PEC under the leadership of Ms. McLaughlin, will be looking at the citizen participation procedures that were from last year's board. And then finally, at our next meeting, we will be looking at recommendations for next, the next reconvening of the calendar committee as they start to look at now the 2020-21 school year calendar to see any possible adjustments. We will be inviting the teachers' associations to join us for that conversation to start to see what are the parameters or questions we would like to ask before the next committee convenes. So I think that's the update from our first meeting, and our next one will be, I believe, on December 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Ms. Schultz for a report on the CPDC Committee.
Yeah, so I'm very pleased. We had the Comprehensive Planning and Development Committee meeting this week, three of our board members and one from Fairfax City, and we are just about to bring a recommendation. It's taken a little while because this is something new to get our hands around, but I thank my colleagues for helping us, and it's possible that the final draft that's going to be worked out between the committee members may come straightforward with the recommendation, or we may decide to have one more month of meeting. But this is, this heavy lifting, I want to thank FPAC Karen for coming as well as Mr. Plattenberg, who has been a key member of helping us guide. But there's a lot of strategic planning, I think, that needs to go into the CIP and how we approach facilities and what the needs are going forward, and I think the board's going to be really pleased when it sees a recommendation from, from the committee in short order.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Moon for a report on the forum held earlier this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Forum is an opportunity where school board members can bring up topics of their interest for informal discussion, and we had the forum earlier this evening. And this evening's forum topic came from Ms. Evans, who represents the nation district. Appreciate them, Ms. Evans. And she did request the superintendent and staff to explore a providing either recess or some other form of instructional time during the school day to middle school students and engage middle school principals where their thoughts and also students' views on the issues, and bring back somewhat information, and then depending upon the information, schedule a work session. And the board, board agreed with that request.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Next on the agenda is board matters, and I call on Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up tonight, I'd like to recognize a student at Westfield High School, Emma Sito. She is now a sophomore there, and she had a pretty tremendous achievement as a freshman last year, winning the Virginia Girls 6A Long Jump Championship as a jumping 19 feet two inches. Pretty extraordinary accomplishment, and I just, I know that we don't do the individual recognitions, but I didn't want this to pass without at least acknowledging her tonight. So way to go, Emma. I also wanted to thank all those who came tonight to speak about the proposed revisions to our cell tower policy. As always, I'm amazed at the thoughtfulness of the presentations and the closeness with which community members watch, watch our work, and I do appreciate the compliments they gave us about the hard work on the governance committee since I was part of that the whole time. And I know it was, it was a tough, a tough process, but obviously, it is good, and to get out of your comfort zone and have some of those places where we've fallen short pointed out to us. So thank you to those folks. And lastly, I do hope everyone is able to go to one of the Veterans Day events, and a shout-out to all the veterans in our community who have served our country and defended our liberties this Veterans Day. Thank you.
Ms. Palchek.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I wanted to give a quick update that Ms. Evans and I attended this, I guess, sessions first, Joint Commission Schools Committee meeting last night, and I know we've talked about having updates from that committee. We spent most of that meeting discussing the work to date from last year, and I believe in the next couple of weeks, we should have something in writing to be able to share with the board. And I know Ms. Evans may have more to say on that, but just wanted to give our board members an update. I, oh, excuse me. Today, I had the pleasure to go to Lemon Road Elementary School. We celebrated the 60th opening of our elementary school salad bars, and I got to meet the Potato Man. It was sponsored by the Potato Council and by the, oh, their name is escaping me, but the group that had the original idea of the salad bars that is working to get, sorry, my computer died.
Real Food for Kids.
No, not, Real Food for Kids was there, but this is a national organization working to advocate for healthier school lunches. And so years ago, they were working together and said, oh, salad bars are a great way to do that. And so they are sponsoring the Potato Council, several of our salad bars, so they were there. We were so impressed by the kids and video they made about kindergartners and their favorite vegetables. And then finally, I wanted to say there is a, we have a coach, Coach Daryl, at Marshall High School, who is up to be a finalist for a Hometown Hero Award. He is a coach. He also has just impressive, beautiful story. Grew up in Southeast DC, worked several jobs while training to run marathons, and encourages every, every athlete, every student, every level to compete. And he's been nominated and is now one of, just a handful of finalists for this award. So I recommend, if you haven't, if you go to the Marshall site, you can see Coach Daryl. Please vote for him, read his beautiful story and what he does for our kids here. And beyond that, I look forward to celebrating a Veterans Day at Flint Hill on Monday morning before our work session. And in addition, my girls-on-the-run decided that for one of their community projects, they will be writing letters to some of our veterans. So look forward to that, and thank our colleagues, and have a good and restful weekend. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was happy to attend and celebrate another successful year of the Opportunity Neighborhood in Mount Vernon. It was great to see so many people in support of this program and for them to get updates about our emerging community school programs in Whitman and Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. And I was honored to represent our board with Dr. Ivy last weekend at the Washington Redskins game, where the Redskins Charitable Foundation celebrated their partnership with our schools through their ASPIRE program. The ASPIRE program, to my colleagues', is initiative that was launched this past year and was designed to inspire, educate, and build confidence in 7th and 8th grade girls. And girls from this ASPIRE cohort from Holmes Middle School, Key Middle School, and Longfellow Middle School attended the game, and we had the privilege of meeting these students and hearing about how this program has worked for them, and they were able to meet the foundation's executive director, Jane Rogers, as well as Kirsten Allen, who is the wife of the Redskins President Bruce Allen, and Sherry Gruden, who is, Gruden, who's the wife of the head coach of the Washington Redskins. I do want to thank Jay Grant and Kathy Ryan for working to foster this partnership. And to my colleagues, this Redskins Foundation has several initiatives in addition to the ASPIRE program, and I've asked Kathy to prepare a document for me to share for all of you about the wonderful programs they give away. They do a lot of it under the radar, giving away coats, reading programs, players coming to the schools, fitness programs, Santa's workshops. It's, there's, it's an amazing partnership, so I want to make sure you all understand and know about it. And as my colleague says, thank you to all who've served our country, and happy Veterans Day.
Vice Chair Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be first thing in the morning tomorrow morning. I'll be at Harlem Meadows Elementary School for their Veterans Day celebration. In addition to that, I want you to know that we have just entered into the most exciting time of the year for me because, because a play of football games start tomorrow evening, first round. There are many good games. I can only pick one game to go and watch, and I'll be at Centerville High School, a rooting for Fairfax County team.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to share first that last night, our special education PTA organization, SEPTA, hosted an inclusion night where not just volunteer organizations, but also Fairfax County staff, and also Mike Bloom, were all there to help talk about the many ways in which we can support our students to be experiencing a more inclusive environment beyond just academics. And so it was, it was a very well-done evening, and certainly appreciated seeing our staff member, Mike Bloom, out of Department of Special Services, coming out on a night like that and, you know, being there in support of our parent advocates who are trying to make a positive difference. I also was today with the Sports Tourism Task Force, which some of you know was something that Supervisor Harity had proposed and received approval from the board supervisors to create a task force. Bill Curran and I are both representing the school perspective on that. Former school board member Kathy Smith is serving on the board supervisors. After almost a year and a half of work, the report is being finalized, and so I'll prepare more information for my colleagues on this, but similar to the Synthetic Turf Task Force that I served on, the goal is that we will prepare a short PowerPoint, and then the team will come and present to each of the boards so that people will just know the highlights of the report. It's not so much that it's going to be a monetary ask in any way at all, but it's more about having a strategic plan for Fairfax County to look at other ways to generate revenue, and that is absolutely through sports tourism. And a lot of incredibly exciting projects are on the horizon, so it's, it's been really a great experience. I've enjoyed it, and so that'll be forthcoming. I think the goal is to probably look at presenting it to the boards, probably in early January, so stay tuned on that. And then I wanted to also just make the, not just the Braddock District residents aware, but really everyone around the county. We had a presentation by county staff and the Department of Planning and Zoning about many real estate development projects that are happening all throughout Fairfax County, and it's pretty remarkable. While growth can be beneficial to a county, certainly its impact on services and infrastructure, roadways, and schools is very real. And so it's been sort of eye-opening for me now that there's some projects that are right in Braddock where normally there's not a lot of land to develop in Braddock District. So unlike Dahlia Palchek over in Providence, and Pat Hines over in Hunter Mill where there's a lot of land, and I know, now even in Mount Vernon, and certainly Ms. Kofax has seen a lot in Lee District, but I just hope that our residents are really paying more careful attention to notices that are coming from their supervisors and really being mindful and being involved and engaged and informed about what this is going to mean. I also am extremely excited as a parent of two Woodson football players and a spouse of a former Woodson football player, that Woodson Football, finally, after many, many years of losing seasons forever and ever like you cannot imagine, clinched the Patriot District title, and they are now playing my other awesome school in the Braddock District, Robinson Football, for the quarterfinals of regionals on Friday night. So Ms. Schultz, I guess you and I can have a sidebar bet on that one, but I'm, I'm just going for the little guy that it's been a long drought for Woodson Football, and so it's kind of nice to see that turn around. And then on a more serious note, I want to thank my Braddock schools for the many invitations for your veterans' celebrations that you're going to be having on Monday. Regrettably, we have an all-day work session, and so those events are happening when we are starting at 10:00 a.m. And as many know, Ms. Schultz and I, for years and years and years, have said that what really needs to happen is we do these Veterans Day celebrations at any other day, but not when Veterans Day falls on a workday because that's when we should be honoring this holiday where students are with their families, and especially our military families. I'm very proud of the fact that my great-grandfather served in World War I, my grandfather served in World War II and Korea, and my husband's two uncles were drafted and served in Vietnam. They were the lucky ones. They made it home alive. And so I just want our community to know that alongside my colleagues, I hope we will all be very mindful and taking a moment of silence in appreciation for everyone who's served our country, and especially those who paid the ultimate price. served our country, and especially those who paid the ultimate price.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I feel like we should have a moment of silence. Well, I will say, today, I actually was at a Veterans Day celebration at Colvin Run Elementary, and had an opportunity to speak to some of the staff, let them know about our ongoing discussion regarding that date. So, I encourage them, and will encourage others, to express themselves when we are planning our calendar. Certainly, support the military as a daughter of a veteran and other many family members who have served and are serving. We certainly appreciate the contributions of our, of our veterans and those in the military, and those that support the military. I also attended what I thought was a fun title. We welcomed a new salad bar at Lemon Tree Elementary, along with Dahlia Palchek. And if they, they had a tribute to the potato, which I just had to put that on Facebook because I thought it was so funny. In any case, that was lovely, and the children were delightful, and the speakers, the young children speaking, I thought were so very impressive. I also attended a Roosevelt at Mason meeting last night, which was really interesting. Some of our educating, our leading leaders in education spoke to students who want to become educators. So, that was actually quite, I was very impressed, very impressed. And I missed Ms. McLaughlin at the SEPTA meeting on inclusion. I came at the tail end. So, I just, there's lots of things going on right now. We have an amazing community. We just made it through elections, and, you know, it just reminds me how so many people have sacrificed for us to have the blessings that we have. So, I wish everybody a good weekend, and hopefully, I will see some of you on Sunday at Hutchinson's Elementary, where they will be having a coat drive and support for their community.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I do want to start by thanking Dr. James Lane, the Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, as well as Delegate Kay Corey for their visit to Justice High School, Glasgow Middle School, and Bailey's Upper. It was, they, they spent the entire day at those three schools and visited classrooms, spoke to students, had a student roundtable, and got very much engaged. Dr. Lane talked about how impressed he was with the high level of learning at, at each of these schools, and we very much appreciate him coming and spending the day with us. Speaking of superintendents, I'm delighted that our superintendent, Dr. Braybrand, is going to be visiting several Mason District Elementary Schools tomorrow, and I will be joining him for part of his day at Annandale Terrace, Park Lawn, Wayanoke, and Columbia. So, I look forward to that. And speaking of Park Lawn, Park Lawn Elementary School is to be congratulated, along with Mount Vernon High School and Holland Meadows Elementary School. They were named the National PTA Schools of Excellence. They're three of only 279 schools from around the country that have received this designation. They are working on connecting with, connecting with families and family-school partnerships. And so, congratulations to all of those, those schools that received that designation. And to pick up where Ms. Palchek left off with the Planning Commission Schools Committee, we have been working diligently with the Schools Committee. They hope to have a final report in March, so Ms. Palchek and I will be working on a communication to tell the board members where they are and where we're headed. We're not finished yet. We're going to be having some more conversations on some key topics, but, but expect to get some communication from us on that soon. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
I indulge, I'm asking my colleagues to indulge because I was not able to be here for our last meeting for a family emergency. First of all, I want to congratulate Dave Jagels, who is the principal of Centerville High School. He has been selected to be the executive principal for Region Five. It's my loss. It's, I burned through principals at Centerville High School, so we're looking for a good one. He is going to stay for a little while until we have an opportunity to transition, and I, and I thank the leadership team for giving us that time to be able to work with the principal pool and the new principal selection process to find a great principal for Centerville High School. I also met with Adam Ebert, our new principal for Liberty Middle School, and with Principal Poole at Chantilly, and had just wonderful discussions with them on planning and administrative guidelines, and thoughts for building strong school communities, and very, very impressed. Mr. Moon, I do not know how you threw down a marker on which game you're going to. That's a tough one. So, we have, what, Centerville High School and Regional Quarterfinal tomorrow. We also have Centerville High School in states for cross-country for girls and boys. They're also having a wonderful athletic year at Chantilly. District champs for volleyball, field hockey, tennis, boys' tennis, girls' cross-country, and I believe, boys. And then, also, we have a amazing business partnership donation from Asha Jahuthi Foundation, a charity foundation, and the parents involved have students who graduated from Chantilly High School. And I toured the Cumming Innovation Lab at Chantilly High School. That is so exciting. As a former attendee at Chantilly High School, it's basically unrecognizable what those students are going to be able to get out of that innovation lab. We also, Ms. McLaughlin, have, who, that's a, going to be a tough game, Robinson and Woodson. I'm, I'm pretty much glad that I don't have very many constituents left who attend Woodson. That's going to be brutal. Boys' States cross-country at Robinson, and girls' this weekend. Robinson, Woodson, mm. Field hockey, States, and volleyball, States at Robinson. West Springfield, girls' country, or cross-country, and boys' cross-country, States this weekend, and double regional champs. There's a lot going on in, in my schools. I do want to say I was sorry I missed the Latino Festival. That was something I was looking forward to. Unfortunately, I had both a committee meeting to lead and the Fairfax Station Homeowners Association. Thank you for that invitation. A number of our high schools had digital citizenship weeks, and this is something I am very pleased with. It seems like we're really trying to elevate the role of students and parents in digital citizenship, particularly with what's going on in our country. The need to respect the fact that there is diversity of thought, and to respect that and, and be good citizens online flows over into our classrooms and into our work environment, so I'm very grateful for that. It is also a busy season for theater. Centerville High School, Bram Stoker's Dracula, Robinson, Our Town, West Springfield High School, Monster Under the Bed. I don't know what that is. Our Town is definitely one of my all-time favorites. I want to say congratulations to a number of Life Scouts, who I have helped finish their final requirements to get to Eagle. And if anybody ever needs that, please always feel free to contact me. Thank you to the school psychologists for their robust assistance to our students and their reception earlier this evening. I very much appreciated that. Thank you to everybody who came out to my town halls. Those, the public engagement that I get to do is still one of my favorite and most, I think, important parts of the role that we do. I, I'm not sure whether we congratulated Keene Mill on being our blue ribbon school, but certainly, my, my thoughts go out to a wonderful administrative and teaching community at Keene Mill for getting that blue ribbon. And lastly, I know a couple of my colleagues said something about Veterans Day. This is, I, I don't know that it's bittersweet. I don't know that that's necessarily appropriate, but it, I'm always a little sad at this time of the year because I, I think this board continues to make a grave mistake in not having, you know, it's the only federal holiday we don't acknowledge on our calendar. And the fact that some schools do things beautifully doesn't, it doesn't assuage the fact that we fundamentally don't honor our veterans. And the, the very fact that we're all here is on the blood and treasure of the patriots who, who have served. A number of us, Karen Keys-Gamara, my father, you know, multiple tours, lifelong service, and multiple members of my family in all branches of the service. And we live in the county with the highest percentage of veterans in the United States of America. And one of these days, whether I'm on the board or not, hopefully, we'll get the message that we get our priorities straight, and that, that we, we duly honor veterans, because I absolutely believe that those communities that do the beautiful veterans events, or have their students acknowledge veterans through a letter-writing program, will do so regardless of which day we do that, but not, not on, not on the actual day. So, thank a veteran, and, and I look forward to participating in, in some of our, our local events. And thanks to everybody who, who does make those events possible.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, and I will be brief. I will add to your list, oh, I'm sorry, oh, my God, Ms. Strauss.
That's okay. I'll be brief. I'm small. Okay, in the last couple of weeks, I have visited Spring Hill Elementary School, Herndon Elementary School, Haycock Elementary School, Great Falls, Chesterbrook, Colvin Run, Longfellow Middle School, and in the next couple of days, I will be at Kent Gardens, Franklin Sherman, and Herndon High School. I'm having great, long visits. It's just fabulous. And thank you, Mrs. Schultz, for mentioning some of the fine arts activities. This is fall season for, for plays, for musicals, for band concerts, for orchestra concerts. And I know that the football season is exciting, but I hope if you have time, you also take a look at the wonderful performances that our, our children are involved in. Many of our Cappy's designated plays are off to a great season. Chantilly has already done their play of Chicago. Thomas Jefferson did a wonderful new play called, and I'm not, I'm sure I won't do this right, so, Date, written by our new theater teacher at Jefferson, Alex Reed, very talented young man. I will be at Bishop Irtan, actually, on Saturday. And then, next weekend, I will be at West Springfield for the Monster Under the Bed. And then, the week after that, I'll be at Mount Vernon for a Spare Me, and I will bring you updates later on as they occur, but it's all in full swing, having, kids having a wonderful time presenting. If you want to see the best written reviews, go to our website, Cappy's NCA, and you will see the pictures of the shows and the best written reviews of each one of the plays. So, thank you all very much.
Robinson Marketplace this Saturday.
I think you reminded everybody of it the last time, so it's okay.
I know. It's really, really great. You got to go. Robinson Marketplace Saturday, nine to three.
There are so many wonderful events in our community, and actually, Ms. Schultz, you got through most of your schools, but you forgot South County. And South County is-
Deference to you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sure. So, South County will be having their track and field events this weekend, so I encourage everybody to go out for that championship as well. And lots of Veterans Day celebrations. And what I really appreciate, Dr. Braybrand, is the intentful effort that all of our principals have taken to Veterans Day this year. It's kind of hard for us to fit them all in. There were some events at Fort Belvoir today. Tomorrow morning, I will start bright and early with the flag raising and USO event at South County, and then go on to Holland Meadows. And the gentleman who sings the National Anthem at Holland Meadows will bring Tears to Your Eyes, a veteran who is just phenomenal. And then, on Monday, at West Potomac High School, the Travis Mannan Foundation will be working with our students on a day of service. And I love the Travis Mannan Foundation for a number of reasons, but in particular is, their motto is, "If not I, then who?" And that truly is what our veterans are all about, giving, putting their life on the line. Other events in the area, the fire department, I want to give a big shout-out to our firefighters because, and EMT. They did an incredible coat drive for our students in the Mount Vernon and Lee area with over $30,000 raised for coats that were distributed last week. And it was just a wonderful event, sorting them, and then welcoming the kids in and letting them pick out their coats. It was just a lot of fun. I also want to thank all of our students who came out on Election Day and volunteered, really got involved in their civic duty. I had a wonderful time with the students down at South County, who were giving out three different types of ballots, and really enjoyed the fact that they were incredibly welcoming and polite. And as everybody left after voting, our students thanked them for voting, and that was just wonderful. So, my hat's off to them. I also am going to give a special shout-out to Marilyn Aboff from West Potomac High School. Marilyn was on the PTA with me six years ago, when she said, "I think we need to do something about SATs." And she went out and she found a partner and began offering mock SATs at West Potomac High School, and then working with the students to identify where they could improve their SAT scores, and has been offering that service now for six years, and has expanded it to Mount Vernon High School. And it certainly has paid off with West Potomac having the highest increase in SAT scores in the county. So, bravo, Marilyn. I'm proud of you. And then, I also want to let people know about the Screenagers that is going to be shown at Hayfield on Monday night. I normally would have left that up to Ms. Darrenak Kofax, because I know she's been the champion for getting that, that screening and getting people to watch it, and so, it's coming again to our neighborhood, so please go see it. And with that, oh, and one last, I want to thank the bus drivers at Walt Whitman Middle School today. They had a wonderful luncheon, which was prepared by the staff and the PTA. And it was just a lot of fun to see all of the bus drivers come in and enjoy a pre-Thanksgiving lunch. So, a big shout-out to them as well. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.